Meeting has come to order at 7:04. Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item of business is to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The agenda is approved. We'll entertain a motion for the approval of open session minutes of March 25th, 2019.
Motion to approve the minutes from the open meeting of March 25th, 2015, or 19.
That's a lot of numbers.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah, because on the minutes, I have March 11th, I have March 25th, and it should be March 11th, so I just noticed that myself, so I'll change that, according to where I got them confused.
Okay, fair enough. All right, any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed nay. And the minutes are approved. Pass over to student comments and move to community comments. Are there any members of the community which should be heard to address the committee? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we shall move on to superintendent comments.
Okay, thank you. Just for informational purposes, and I put minutes in your packet, I've been asked to serve on a legislative committee that's been formed within the last month or so, and it's a committee on the special, the title of the committee is the Special Commission on Improving Efficiencies in Student Transportation, and it has legislative, but also some educational and Department of Education representation on it to kind of look at some key issues with regard to transportation, public school transportation throughout the Commonwealth. As I said in the background note, the commission co-chairs are Representative Alice Peisch, who's from Wellesley, and Senator Adam Hines from the Burgs, shares. The charge of the commission is to look at a lot of the longstanding issues, many of which that we've talked about here at the school committee level, particularly with regard to regional transportation and regional transportation reimbursement, special education, transportation, and a whole host of other issues, you know, for example, transportation to agricultural schools, tech schools, and so on. So the, we have a whole slate of meetings through the holidays of this year, and the intent is to have recommendations that could be potentially implemented for the FY21 budget process, so I'll keep you apprised of that. Secondly, just kind of an update, I know we've talked about the Seal of Bilinguality, I'm really proud to announce that we have identified 15 of our graduating students who will graduate with the official Massachusetts Seal of Bilinguality, which I think is a remarkable accomplishment for our district. This week also, we will have three students who will be testing using a test known as the Apple Assessment, which is the assessment of the performance towards proficiency in languages. Realize the students that we identified so far have met proficiency or higher on the grade 10 MCAS ELA and have scored either fours or fives on AP Spanish exams. So very, very high benchmark, but also realize the Department of Education has put forth guidelines of other parameters to demonstrate proficiency, in the case of all three of these students in Spanish as well. So they will be doing basically a two-hour online assessment, this Apple Assessment, and if they score in high intermediate range or above, an advanced range, they'll qualify for the seal as well. So something to be real, real proud of, I think it speaks to the quality of our programming and specifically the Spanish immersion program. Thirdly, just kind of as an FYI, and I think Kelly could speak to this as well as town clerk, but I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of the town of Upton and specifically in coming up with a strategy around the FY2020 budget. Myself and five other department heads, I believe it's a total of six.
Or seven, I think it's a.
Six or seven. Filmed today, short two- to three-minute informational videos about the highlights of the FY2020 budget and putting the word out there about the importance of engagement, specifically in the case of the town of Upton, for their town meeting on Thursday, May 2nd. So the intent is a pretty short turnaround time producing them and then having them broadcast vis-à-vis social media and YouTube over the coming weeks. Just as a follow-up to, I believe, last meeting, the issue of vaping and some of the programming for vaping came up. Once again, the district will be holding an informational program for students' parents about the danger of vaping, and somebody who's received a lot of positive feedback, a woman by the name of Tina Rozowski, who is out of UMass Medical School, will be presenting. And we recently, literally within the last week or so, have gotten back our most current Metro West Adolescent Health Survey data, so Tina's going to kind of be calling through some of that data specifically of our middle school and high school students. So that event is going to be held Tuesday, May 7th at 6:30, and I included the flyer in your packet. All, I'm sorry.
Is that here?
No, it's going to be at Misco, in the Misco Auditorium. And then also in the Misco Auditorium, in the same vein, we're going to do once again an Alice parent presentation. Tentatively, we're looking at Tuesday, April 30th, I believe I sent you the wrong flyer, unfortunately. And this is going to be a co-presentation of our, both of our school resource officers, Officer Senko from Mendon and Officer Ambrosino from Upton, to kind of talk about the Alice protocol, the necessary provisions that need to be put in place, and I think really the powerful piece is the Q and A from our parents. So I know in February, Officer Senko did one presentation for Mendon parents at Misco. We received a lot of positive feedback, so we kind of want to put the all call out again for all of our parents throughout the district to have that information. Okay. Any questions on any of that?
Is there a targeted date for that?
Uh, yeah, Tuesday, April 30th.
Cool.
All right, next we move on to subcommittee updates. Is there a budget subcommittee update, this year 20 budget?
So not a lot new to report, something that we've been anticipating, I believe this Thursday, the 11th, the House Ways and Means will be releasing their FY20 budget. We did receive word specifically from Senator Fatman's office that Senators Moore, Fatman, and Maradian did sign on to two letters. One was requesting a full $100 per pupil in minimum aid, actually all four of those are representatives, as did Representative Murray. And then Senators Moore and Fatman and Representative Maradian also signed on to a letter for full 100% reimbursement for regional transportation. So the, very appreciative of our legislative representatives signing on to that, and we will have more knowledge of where we are in this process after the House Ways and Means is released this week.
Okay. Okay, next we move to new business, and if there's no objection, we will go a little bit out of order and start with approval of field trips. So first, let's discuss the Spring Music Festival, Virginia, April 2020.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to postpone approval of the Spring Music Festival to Virginia in 2020.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have one thing to bring up for the music. So I was just at the Micah Festival, and those guys got a gold medal, and their, and the concert band got a bronze.
Yeah.
That was excellent.
Congratulations to those guys.
And so, at the same event, this isn't intended to be a competition between schools, but you gotta kind of compare, right? But Boston Latine has traditionally been a very strong school in this regard, ended up getting a silver. Our guys played extremely difficult music, it was very well done, and they deserved that award, I think. So they have the opportunity now to play at Symphony Hall on May 4th. So, very cool. It's like the Super Bowl of the bands. So it's very, very cool, I was very impressed.
Thank you, John, here from the peanut calendar, thank you for mentioning, and I think that's the first time in the long history of our band that we have a sponsor.
Wow.
To Mr. Hurdle those congratulations.
It's fabulous.
We're very excited about that.
Awesome.
Yeah, it's very cool.
Okay, so, the motion's been made and seconded to postpone the Spring Music Festival field trip. Any other discussion on that topic? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed nay. All right, so that would be postponed to a later meeting. Next, we have the NASA Epic Challenge Student Exhibition in Florida, June 2019, so I'd like to invite Mr. Gorman to answer any questions that we may have. Is there, do you have a synopsis of what?
Sure, let me tell you.
Sure.
This is the engineering students, being invited by Dr. Cryer down to Kennedy Space Center to present the results of their research for the year. Usually like 20 minutes is what they get for a presentation time, each team, and then they do about 10 minutes of question and answer with the people at NASA. Get a feedback or statement, then work on putting it in place for next year, and then probably continue with having a second year, mini year, and next year, and that will go around. We have 10 students that signed up for it, and you want for next year. We leave Thursday morning, early, get down there, head from Orlando over to Cape Canaveral, and set up the next day. But it's filming early and setting up, because as a kid, free entry into Kennedy Space Center, the visitor's center there, so kids can run around and play in there for a while. And the next day, is usually when we have our trip over to Kennedy Space Center proper, so not a visitor's center, but actually onto the military base, kind of interesting process, they pull up the bus, the army, then you know, they sniff everything going on at the military base, so all the kids are checked, we go on the bus, and then we go, see the labs there, we met the director, Kennedy Space Center lab here and there, stood in the huge space where they built the whole International Space Station. The kids get some nap, let me continue the tour, and the rest of the day, the rest of the Kennedy Space Center. Then usually Saturday is when they all meet together and they do their presentations. Sunday, we live fine.
Great. Okay. Any questions, any discussion?
How many students?
Probably maximum 10.
10? And you're, would you be chaperoning?
Yeah, me and Mrs. LaFlash as well, as resident resident girl as well.
And I recall the presentations, they were really, really wonderful, the forum that you guys had back, three months back, two months ago.
Yeah, we'll be a group going to Finland in two weeks.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah, and then, realist terms, you know, it's a bit cold there, a virtual link, so some of the students that couldn't go will be able to actually present, be able to say what they do at the university. So have a nice little bonus, and we're hoping to do that for maximum two. As far as those that can't make it, still participate in that one.
Okay, if there are no further questions, is there a motion to approve the NASA Epic Challenge Student Exhibition in June 2019?
Yeah, motion to approve the trip for 2019, NASA Epic Challenge Student Exhibition.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's approved, great. Look forward to hearing all the wonderful things you guys do down in NASA.
I know I'm jumping out of protocol here, I'd be remiss not to thank you, to thank Mr. Gorman. You mentioned Finland, this trip coming to Kennedy Space Center, the symposium, just a few days, he's working with Mr. Quinn to do the golden launch, he's being such an immediate and powerful impact on our kids and our program, we're really fortunate to have him, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we've approved field trips, and next we move to the review of the 2018-19 Merzty District Action Plans.
Okay. You have in your packet the complete action plans that were approved. If you recall, a little bit late this year, I believe it was in October, for this current school year, as I typically do at the halfway point, and I realize that we're beyond the halfway point, well beyond the halfway point, just to kind of give a quick status update in all eight initiatives that were taken on as a district this current year, I'm not going to go through every single action except, otherwise we'll be here a super, super long time, but kind of give an overview of what have we accomplished, what do we feel like is in pretty good shape as far as the progress, and what are still some of the steps that are still ahead, okay? So the first initiative, you know, it's kind of the perpetual initiative around improving school and home communication with all of our families, and really a lot of the action plans dealt with the sharing of our new district strategic plan inspire and rolling it out, and we feel very good about getting it out there vis-à-vis email, vis-à-vis our website. I will be spending the next two evenings, tomorrow evening with Clough PTO, and then the following evening with Memorial PTO, kind of giving an overview of where we are as a district with regard to our strategic plan, and the Portugal graduate, and then also the budget process. So we're getting the word out there. A lot of work has been done also by Dave Quinn, continuing almost on a monthly basis, hashtag M U R S D leads cats, and then also one of the action plan steps around an online digital community conversation, which was held last November, spearheaded by John Clements and Mary Ann Moran. I think the vision piece that is detailed in the action plan around predictable expectations and having that ongoing communication, consistent communication from classroom to classroom with our families, more work needs to be done there. Some of that work has been commenced through the folks that we've had actively involved in project-based learning training, the PBL training, and through our homework committee, but still the vision is to create some type of district-wide guide of exemplary practices and put it out there in a similar vein like the work of our homework committee. The second initiative is, again, initiative two and three really are targeting around what are we doing with regard to social emotional learning and supports and intervention in place for our learners. I think the most robust work that's been going on has been at the elementary level, and I know earlier in the year, we had Jan and Deb present to you about the work that's been done in crafting a PBIS program and having a SEL matrix to kind of talk about what are behavioral expectations in all settings for all kids. That work is commencing at the middle school level in draft form. There's also some action plan steps again about the administration of the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, and then calling through that data, and then also the design and ongoing promotion of wellness weeks here at NIPAC and at Misco. As a matter of fact, I think this is the second of two wellness weeks, this current week. Some work that still lies ahead, is really more coordination amongst the schools of those tier one or those supports for all kids. I think all of us as educators really need more tools and our collective tool lots as far as providing supports for all kids. I think again, there's a natural tendency to really focus at those early ages to impact behavior at an early age, but it doesn't mean that that work shouldn't be or can't be happening, particularly here at the high schools, so work needs to be done in that area. And then again, getting more word out there to our families about the supports that are in place. Again, initiative three is about teaching and modeling these core competencies. Maureen has done a lot of work in keeping our membership in the Excel Network alive well, and leading that work has led book studies for staff around, I think she presented it to you before, SEL in the classroom. And work commences, again, very strongly at the elementary level about highlighting best practices for our kids and sharing those resources. I think in our original action plans, there was a vision around creating some type of community conversation and community book study around the work SEL in the home. I think there's some expenses that were unforeseen, that are fairly costly, that kind of go with that as far as the actual work, but then also the consulting that goes with it, so we're still investigating some of the costs with that. I think some of the vision around this is, we've had the opportunity for some of the SEL Excel Network participants to do, and administrators to do a self-assessment of where we are by school, but then also to bring that down to the classroom level as well. As far as the force initiative, kind of speaks to safety and crisis planning and so on. We have just gotten started with regard to doing Alice training in our buildings, and we see better communication and better partnership between the Mendon and Upton Police Departments. We're really pleased with the upgrade of the security camera system here at NIPAC, and we're cautiously optimistic we'll be able to do the same at Misco through the grant that I described last meeting. And then in our budgetary plans, the pilot guest check-in system that we have at Clough, our plan is to implement that District One. As far as work that we still need to do, and I think we kind of have it as a summer project, is a more comprehensive update to our school crisis plans in conjunction with our police departments, and then also the online mandated training modules that we require all of our employees to do, that Maureen manages, kind of looking at an update of those based upon an evaluation. As far as our fifth initiative, kind of the redesign of use of space and time and learning environments, one of the things that we put some work into, but I don't know if I want to say fortunately or unfortunately, we never really implemented, was coming up with an alternative structure, Learning Day Guidelines and Agreement. I believe we did one of the days, and it was only for the high school, because that's all Mother Nature permitted. But some good work, I think, was done and will be applied to next school year. We're also in the process of kind of looking at the Misco schedule in a comprehensive manner. And then also, something that I think the start is there, but probably we need to support in a more robust way, is kind of looking at new flexible furniture options, particularly at the secondary level, kind of getting away from the traditional desks. We're getting, you know, we've had some successes both here and at the middle school, teachers kind of starting to look at more flexible furniture. I think the areas where there's more work needed is offering a little more training, more PV, and around using space, and then also seeing what is out there with regard to other schools, and having, you know, an opportunity for staff to reflect on how are they using their space. Sixth initiative, it really kind of speaks to project-based learning and the work that's been done. We've had a team of approximately 20 to 25 educators across the district be trained in the Project-Based Learning 101, of course, from the Buck Institute. And so, a lot of work has been done, particularly here at the high school, in tying project-based learning to the six Portugal graduate competencies that are envisioned in our strategic plan. And the investment in PBL and the staff that has been trained through the Buck Institute is, the vision is to kind of spread that at the grade level and the team and departmental level. Also, I think John and Mary Ann has spoken to it, some great work has been done here at the high school, particularly through the 21st Century Learning Conferences, in making direct linkages to the POG competencies, and also creating draft reflective rubrics for each of those six competencies. I think as far as the additional work, we need to kind of spread this work even more and have more of our staff trained through the Buck Institute. I know in speaking with Maureen, we're going to have them come out this summer, I think we're already at the max as far as.
Yeah, so through the vice, we have to announce these spots who are there, which we have courtful right now for our district, but if there's a need, we'll get you to go and get those for members. And LCO, which is another organization, it has got updated today, they're also going to be running another session moving to Denver, so through those organizations, they're bearing a bit of that cost, and so it's not all on their district, so they have more opportunities, which is great.
I realize the Buck Institute is considered to be, for lack of a better term, kind of old standard as far as what's out there for project-based learning, and with that comes a fairly hefty expense, pretty generously. One of the visions that is in this initiative's plans, and also another one, is to kind of create more opportunities for student exhibitions, and, you know, some kind of final exhibition night where students can showcase their work or something meaningful with regard to project-based learning for an authentic audience. As far as the seventh, specifically spoke to the work that's been done with homework and providing coherency and consistency with homework strategies. As we know, in the late fall, we rolled out the homework guideline. As we know, in the late fall, we rolled out the homework guidelines. We're still in the process of rolling that out. We've done it on a large, larger scale issue, but now it kind of comes down to having conversations on a smaller, you know, through comment planning time, through department meetings, through team meetings and so on. And then with that has been outstanding work by Maureen in doing things like book studies of the work, rethinking homework. As far as the work, and we've talked about this, is ensuring that the guidelines are shared with all of our MURSD families, ensuring that they're, again, similar to the communication piece, that there's consistency and alignment with the guidelines consistently and appropriately with, across the grade levels, and then that piece around surveying students and staff to get not only baseline, but also kind of game. And then last but not least, the eighth initiative is around implementing maker education robotics and emerging technologies. I really wish Dave Quinn was here because he is my guy, he's my point person on a lot of this, and he's really the brains behind the operation with this. But Dave is very, very passionate about creating more professional development opportunities on things like maker education and product-oriented learning. He has crafted some great collaborations with the MIT Teaching Systems Lab, and as a matter of fact, during our last PD day, they came and they did a session for our teachers. I think we'll have something to share very, very shortly about seeking out aggressively opportunities to expand maker education within our district, and again, Dave has been a key person. He also has put together a district-wide team that meets early in the morning, an R and D team to talk about an expansion of innovative programming. And then I think we shared out, Dave shared about, out about this, this was right before the holidays, doing the Save Wilbur, our second district-wide challenge. Again, I think as far as where there's more work needed, I think it's more about getting the word out there with regard to what does maker ed mean to me? What are some potential opportunities that I can bring into the classroom? What are some things with regard to product-oriented learning? I think a lot of things are happening that are absolutely wonderful. You know, looking at Anne Reposa over there, who really is passionate about the work that she's doing with her kids with regard to gardening, and all the natural outputs of that, that are much more than just, hey, learning about how do I make things grow. So I think it's, it's taking those types of opportunities and tying them together across all content areas. And again, that second piece around the vision of having some type of exhibition evening or exhibition event where kids are going to showcase their authentic learning is another area where we need still to fall through on some of these action steps. So again, that's very, very quickly, kind of a status update of where we are with regard to these eight initiatives that are detailed in the action plans. Does anybody have any questions about any of those?
I like the furniture ideas, alternative furniture. So, does anybody ever went to a Google facility or Google development facility?
I believe John and Mary Ann went, right?
Yeah, so that's a completely wild place to go. It's like you'll find people there that are, they look like they grew out of the, out of the carpet because they've been there for so long. But there's, the creativity boost you get from that kind of furniture, those, those kind of alternative working environments is really good.
It was really cool. We saw some hallways have designed like city streets, including mailboxes and stop signs and other places. We saw massage area, we saw ping pong areas, and then there was a giant center where, that had food and coffee free all day long. They talked about collision collaboration is sort of the values that drive their work. I love that idea of collision, getting people with different ideas passing into each other through.
When I saw that pub, had an English pub on the side of it, they had like a whole, a whole facility for 3D printing, and it was just, anybody could do anything they wanted in there. They were, they were complaining that they, when they fired someone, they had to kind of evict them too, so it would take like a week to evict them, but they could fire them on Monday, but they'd stick around for three weeks and just eat all food and, you know, it was a very strange thing.
We were on the fourth of August, and I looked out the window, it looked like we were at ground level, they had turned the next door parking garage into an outdoor park, a beautiful park with fountains and walking paths.
So now we get an idea of where you're going with this, John.
I think when we talk about capital planning, I think invariably in putting together really a comprehensive plan, I think furniture really has to be part of it. I've had many conversations with John and Mary Ann, I've also had conversations with Jen at the middle school, plus in doing walkthroughs, I see a lot of our teachers are naturally, very organically wanting to get away from the traditional desks and doing things on their own. I can honestly say, I've talked to teachers that have used their own expenses, or the expenses of their spouses or their spouses, building things creatively to kind of have better furniture and better use of space within their classrooms. So I think it's something that we're all on the same page, that we definitely want.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. There's, there's a couple of, at least a couple of the teachers where, you know, my daughters have told me where the, it becomes a free-form discussion and everyone's, you know, allowed to, to contribute to it, so the desks kind of get in the way. It's, it's not that they're, you know, an alternative piece of furniture, it's, it's like not conducive to the type of learning that they're getting within our classes today. So it's actually a pretty cool, pretty cool innovation, I love that.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business, people in the committee? Hearing none, we'll move to correspondence. Any correspondence?
Sounds like a whole bunch of us are going to the day on the Hill on May 1st, so.
How many signed up for that? What do we have, three, four?
Me.
I think.
Vicky.
Okay, super.
You go.
We'll be.
Possibly.
A fun day.
Yeah, we'll run us some cages, it could. Okay, and are there other matters not anticipated by this committee? Put them 48 hours of the posted meeting. Okay, hearing none. Future agenda items include the superintendent's mid-cycle review on April 29th and the Mersey Choice openings for 2019-20 on May 13th. Do you have a special person?
No, solo saludos a mi amigo Alvaro que vive en Costa Rica. Alvaro siempre ve nuestras reuniones por Skype para mejorar su inglés. So anyway, I have a friend in Costa Rica, he's one of the four people who always watches our meetings on YouTube. Hola, Alvaro.
Okay, not much left, but to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned at 8:43.